Today is September 18th and the special BOC meeting is called to order at 6:00 PM. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Oakley?
Here.
Commissioner Douthur?
Present.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Here.
Mayor Blaine?
Here.
Can I make a change to the agenda?
I don't know, let's see.
Do you want to do it now or later?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to take off the appointment service because there's several people that applied and I don't know if anybody else has but I haven't had an opportunity to review the applications.
I haven't either. Has anyone else had a chance?
No, I just learned from our city clerk that we do have three applications in now and I was just going to suggest before Commissioner Oakley said it that maybe we need to advertise and close the applications received by maybe September the 28th. I think, I don't know if I mentioned it till you're not, anyway, so that we would have time between now and the October the 9th meeting too. I think that would be great.
I think that's reasonable.
Thank you.
First on the agenda, we have a red tide update from Jay Gunter from the DRC Emergency Services. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you guys for having me. So we are here.
The microphone.
That one works better.
About an hour, we good?
We're good.
Oh, there we go. Sorry. I'm a trash man. So let me just give you the update right now. So the fresh kill had stopped. The fresh kill started from the beach side all the way to a half mile out and that's what really put us in a bind Friday. So we've been raking, keeping up, doing a good job, trying to keep it off the beach. We make several passes. Your beach is getting a lot of attention because we knew you were going to get hit the worst and you have been hit the worst throughout this thing. Other areas like Indian Shores right now is getting hit with some big fish, but you guys have constantly, constantly gotten hit and it's because of the plume being so close out there and also some of the plume coming in through John's Pass. So update really was Friday afternoon when we started experiencing the fresh kill. It was from again the shoreline to a half mile out and it was hard to keep up with it. We kept up with it and we kept working hard at it. We still kept running the shrimp boats because we still have kill out three miles or we did at that point. Saturday was a really bad day. We had probably 10, 15 feet of shoreline full of fish that we were cleaning up and doing it as fast as we can.
Could you hold the other microphone up so that people can...
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Also, I want to mention that we've actually been here since September 8th and we talked to the county a month before that about what was going on. So your county is the first one to pre-plan and get stuff offshore and we kept the stuff offshore and off your beaches for quite a while until this past Friday at 2:00, we started getting some really bad stuff. So when it's happening from, you know, the beach side all the way out like that, that close, I can't react with the shrimp boats we have out there. It's getting too shallow for them. They can get down to about eight feet, but then we run into a sandbar here and there. So, you know, it's again, so we're reacting to that close stuff immediately the best we can. We got that clean. The beach is pretty clean today. We didn't have a lot coming in on your side. There's a bunch coming in right now at Indian Shores and Indian Rocks Beach. But again, today we're having the issue with some red tide right inside the, all the inlets here. So it looks like we probably have permission to put the boom up. I gotta check my email, it's going crazy. So hopefully we can put the boom up at John's Pass and stop anything from coming in, but as long as it's freshly killing here in your inlets, I can sweep through here one minute and then two hours later we see it again. Jonathan and I saw it out here and then I sweep it again all in these inlets and two hours later. So those are actively killing fish in the inlets right now. So we just, all we can do is react to that. We're gonna stay here, do what we've got to. The state has given a grant to the county. I know the county's asked for some more funding as well, so we'll be here and you guys have my card. What all we have out there, just so you know too, we have five shrimp boats out offshore. We have five beach rakes now as well as your beach rake. And let me tell you, your guy Dave is incredible. Probably the best guy I've worked with in a long time. That guy's on the beach rake. He's, I see him everywhere. He's like me, he don't sleep. And so he's done a fantastic job. Of course Jonathan and Lacy are wonderful. They, you know, I'm office-ing here. I'm here, I'm as close as I can get. All our equipment is based here at John's Pass, well, the most, the majority of it because we knew you were going to get hit the worst and we're gonna keep at it as long as we've got to. The beach rakes, we have hand crews raking it to a straight line so the beach rakes can be efficient and get through there as fast as they can. Today I had, I ended up with 14 inlet boats as well and those are skimmers. We have some specialized, I call them water skid steers with the bucket. They do real well inside the docks and getting in there too. So a lot of specialized equipment in there. You've probably seen the conveyor belt loader as well, skimmer as well. Let's see, am I forgetting anything? We're just gonna keep at it as long as we need to and you guys are gonna, you're obviously a focus, so. Any questions?
I have a question, Jay.
Okay.
Is there, I know it's kind of hard to predict, but do you have any ideas to another week of this, a few days of this?
You know, we know we're gonna have, let me preface this. The plume was a million acres Friday out there and that's miles long. We go up with the Coast Guard as regular as possible. We were up there, I think we went up today. We went up Friday, the last time I know we went. We get the coordinates and measure it and we see where it's moving and where pieces are breaking off or even where it's growing in some places on the south end down at Charlotte County, we see a little growth. So we're monitoring that. So we obviously have fish kill around the edge of that plume, all around it, so we're trying to get that. But what's happening is, you know, we get some undercurrent underneath it because in some places that plume is 30 foot deep. So in some places that undercurrent will flow out and when it gets out there activated by the chlorophyll, sun, it's killing fish right then and that's when it's really killing them. And the problem right now is it's killing them from the plume to the shoreline because we have an inbound wind and some of people have said that inbound wind is here from the hurricane up there pulling it this way. So normally we would have a westerly wind, which is what we want to help situations. To answer the question, I don't know. A good sign is, I've done this a long, 35 years, garbage man and, you know, debris person. Normally we see, when we start seeing the bigger fish that we're seeing now, which we're seeing three to 10 pound groupers right on the shore at Indian Beach, in Indian Rocks Beach today, we saw some of that in your beach Sunday. That's usually the end of it, but who knows? We did see that down in the southern counties from you here and then they're getting hit again with smaller amounts of fish. So the county did tell me that in 2008 you had a plume offshore that was there for seven months. Several things are gonna stop it. One is it stopped getting nutrient or feeding off of something because it is a living organism. So it needs to lose food, which it's not getting any feed from the south, which is good, any runoff from Okeechobee, which is good. But it's feeding now. We think it's feeding off the fish oil from the fish, so sooner or later that'll end. The other thing that will help dissipate it or make it go away is cool weather. So, you know, we're in Florida, but we could use some cool weather to help us. Again, it's Mother Nature, man. I don't know. Right now we're planning a week out from here.
I know you mentioned Dave and how helpful he's been. Well, it all goes out to the Public Works Department. I've seen some of the other guys out there too, working and it's amazing what they're doing out there.
You guys are incredible.
They are.
So you, your people are...
They are super terrific.
They're not just talkers, they're workers.
They are.
They're out there hand in hand with us and Jonathan as well, Lacy right there. You guys are awesome. Clearwater Beach too, man, they've really been out there with us hammering it and Indian Rocks Beach has been out there hand in hand with us. St. Pete Beach has been out there handling, running your own rakes too, which is good. That's the way to go about it. I mean, none of us here created this, but all together we're gonna fix it or either attend to it whenever we need to, so.
Thank you very much for all your effort.
Thank you. I love it, so. Any other questions?
Well, I just want to thank you. You're doing a great job. The inlets near my place, they were really, really bad this morning, but I saw boats out there sweeping them up and it looks good now.
You'll still, you'll still see us, man. We do know where it's going and we get the calls and...
And you respond quickly.
We're responding. We will react and respond. So the inlet is definitely, the inlets are definitely the issue right at this moment and hopefully we can just attack that for now and not get the beach. The beach will stay slow will be good. All right. Thank you guys.
Madam Mayor, if I may, to kind of dovetail on those comments, I can tell you one of the great things that we have going for us is when the question was asked, if we had any office space or space for them to occupy, we said absolutely. So they are stationed in a conference room here at City Hall, so their central command, for lack of better terms, is here in Madeira Beach and I think that also helps with the response that we're seeing in our community and how we move forward to address this. And the public work staff and all the staff involved have done some yeoman's work, working with Jay's team to try to address red tide as best as possible. In light of the environmental challenges that we're experiencing in our community, we know that it's also having a profound impact in our businesses. And so one of the things that I wanted to see if the board would be amenable to consider is to allow for us to effectively suspend the charge for parking on all city-owned lots until the water conditions improve to where we can get information from Pinellas County that says effectively red tide is no longer with us. I had a conversation with the city attorney today. What he said is that he would recommend that the board, if the board is amenable to such an action, that the board can give me administrative consensus and authority to effectively not enforce the charge for parking and then we would ask for a special meeting on the 25th of September to memorialize it by virtue of a resolution to suspend the fees for parking on all city-owned lots. I think that gesture would have a profound impact on our local businesses to just encourage people, to let them know that we're still open for business and that as little as $2.50 may seem to some folks, that may be enough to encourage somebody to come here and know that we're still open for business. So staff is requesting direction from the board and support from the board to effectively suspend the fees for parking until the water conditions improve. That is provided by Pinellas County. And what I would do is place an item on the agenda every meeting to allow for us, in the event that the conditions improve, then we can, in essence, repeal the resolution to again effectively start charging for parking. But we think that this may be an incentive and an economic inducement to allow for maybe some folks to come and visit our community and still visit our restaurants, shops and businesses because certainly the help would mean a lot.
Very good. I think that could be an excellent idea.
Idea. I think it's excellent. A citizen had called me yesterday, I think or the day before, and I think same time I had mentioned it to the city manager, he came out with it first, so. But it was an excellent thing. When do you think that it could, this could be advertised? I mean, I think that's really important too. And then how will we cover up the meters or will it not just be...
We actually have tentatively drafted a sign here that basically reads, effective immediately, parking fees in all city-owned lots are suspended until further notice. We can have signs up as early as tomorrow and then we can program the kiosk. Will take probably about 24 hours, but we would envision probably by Friday at the latest that there would be appropriate notice throughout the city. We would place information on social media and in our parking lots and obviously through a press release to inform folks that we are suspending the fees associated with parking. So if the board is amiable to moving forward in such a direction, we will get the signs here probably by tomorrow around noon time and then we'll go ahead and get them installed. So people will see the signs as early as midday tomorrow if it's the board's pleasure.
Is this something we need to vote on, just for consensus?
I probably would just prefer to have a vote, some official legislative action that the board takes and then we will come back with the corresponding resolution to memorialize it. But any day that we can get this in place sooner does help. So, you know, based on the conversation I had with the city attorney, he felt comfortable that we can move forward with a voice vote of the board to effectively suspend the fees for parking and then bring back the corresponding resolution to memorialize it in the appropriate fashion consistent with the policies that are in place.
Okay. My vote is yes.
I'll make a motion to suspend emergency, or what do I call it, just parking of all city-owned metered lots effective tomorrow, September the 19th and contingent on, or not contingent on, but you're bringing back a resolution for the board to consider on September the 25th. And maybe when you bring it back, it'll be gone.
I'll be here.
I'll second. The floor is now open for public comment.
Tom Edwards, protected address. My only question is, would you want to contact the county and see if it would also apply to the county parking lot?
We can place a contact into the county and they obviously monitor that particular lot and see how they would like to handle it. But I would envision by the actions that if the board takes those actions tonight, I think other cities will follow suit to have uniformity and consistency. But we would reach out to the county and inform them of the legislative action if the board takes such an action tonight.
It just would be consistent for other...
Absolutely.
Good idea. Anyone else?
This is great. Is this a public comment about what you were talking about or...
This is a public comment about this item. Anyone else? Public comments now closed. All right, we have a first and a second. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthur?
Yes.
Mayor Blaine?
Yes.
Excuse me, can I say something?
Yes.
John, Jonathan, I just wanted to ask a question on something. I was at John's Pass again today and the parking lot is very scarce and I know some of those business merchandise merchants are really having a hard time. I know there's something we can do about it at this point, but is there some type of aid or something that is available, just like the BP settlement? I know it's totally different from what this is, but is there any type of aid or some kind of funding for the merchants?
There is some money that is available. The governor has allowed for, in essence, a low interest loan that's available for businesses that are impacted associated with the red tide. What we can do is we can post that information and that, and those helpful links on our website as early as tomorrow and I will be meeting with a couple of merchants tomorrow morning and we can convey that those tools are available should they look to participate in that. So we can, we can do that as far as the, you know, monies that were allocated similar to BP. The state hasn't come out and done that yet, but we are monitoring that as well because it seems like this red tide is going to be with us for a little bit of time. So it may be something in Tallahassee that they consider taking a step further.
Okay, thank you.
The floor is now open for public comment, anything that is not on the agenda. Please remember to state your name and address and please remember to be civil and respectful. Oh, thank you very much, Jay. Reese.
Last night, oh, Reese Noran, 363, Medallion, your closest neighbor still. Last night, the city manager mentioned that we could comment on items that were brought up, referring to the referendum, that's hard to say, tonight. If that still goes, that's what my comment refers to. And the particular amendment that I have in mind is the one that requires that the city manager be a member of an organization that is not public. It is a private organization, is operated privately. It's a splendid organization, by the way. I have no problem with the organization whatsoever or a member being our city manager. What I have a problem with is forcing anyone to be a member of any private organization in order to serve on the government payroll. That is just not a smart thing to do. I'm a student of history, not a very good one, but I happened to be alive when Hitler was making his speeches and we happened to have a neighbor who was German, who enjoyed listening to it because he loved Germany. When the war, when Edvard started in Europe and an organization in this country became the Bund and the Bund took up the Nazi cause and this gentleman who was a good neighbor, good man, took up the Nazi cause. It was very easy because he was Germany, loved Germany and this was going to be the salvation for Germany because economics drove the issue. Well, it didn't take long for that organization to become something of hate and you had to be blond-haired and blue-eyed to be a superior race, which I resented because I had dark hair and dark eyes. But the whole thing as far as requiring a public official to be a member of a private organization is not a smart thing to do and I highly am against it. I don't know how many of you are John McCain admirers. I'm an unabashed admirer of his. He had the ability to get along with people who had different opinions than his and still respect them and I do too. But this is the best opinion you could have. So I urge you to not push that one. Thank you.
Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore Drive, Madeira Beach. Just a couple of things. The meeting was very good last night that we had on the amendments. They should have been out there before they were put to a vote as an ordinance so people could understand what was going on and there could have been more input. This was kind of like shoved down our throats and now it's after the fact. The other thing is, they talked about having multiple meetings on the amendments. Those amendments, meetings were held during the day when a majority of, or a lot of the people who actually have jobs, who work, who have kids in school, who have to travel back to Madeira Beach, they can't attend those meetings in the middle of the day. That's just ludicrous to have those meetings in the middle of the day. You're not going to have the attendance that you need. And same goes with the meetings that we have now. I'll bring it up over and over again. Starting at 6 o'clock doesn't allow people who are working in Tampa, Sarasota, up in Clearwater to get off work, come down here, get their, go home, get their stuff together and be able to come to this meeting in any type of manner. So we're not being very helpful to those people. Numbers do matter. So I did a little survey of the meetings that we've had and numbers do make a difference. So the previous commission in the same time period, April 1st to March 31st, prior to your election, had 26 total meetings, 12 regular, six special, five workshop and three budget for an average of 2.1 meetings per month. Your first year in office, you had 12 regular, 14 special, 20 workshops and three budgets for an average of 4.1 meetings per month. As of April 1st this year to now, you've had 30 meetings or an average of five meetings per month. This indicates dysfunction. If you don't know what the heck you're doing, you have a meeting and it's apparent that you really don't have, know what you're doing and you're forcing things down people's throats. So it's totally ludicrous. Five meetings per month to run the city? That's nuts. I think you need to think about that. You're trying to shove things down people's throats and by having meeting after meeting after meeting, this, it's just not acceptable. It's not a full-time job. You have, you set goals, the city manager does the work for you. You're not doing that. You're trying to micromanage. Thank you.
My name is Ron Loggett. I'm at 13231 Gulf Lane. First of all, I'm up here to talk about an article I saw in the Beach Beacon and the only good thing I saw about the article was the fact that the commission... And the only good thing I saw about the article was the fact that the commission, commissioners recommended that the proposed hotel for John's Pass, they have a meeting for the entire city of Madera Beach. I think that's an excellent idea. The reason I say this is that I've had experiences with Mr. Boziak when he was doing the Barefoot Beach. He painted a very pretty picture of all the great things that are going to happen, but he forgets to mention some of the things that are detrimental to the, to the neighbors. One of the first things that I came across was the fact that he built the north parking lot about 2 feet above grade. This was going to cause flooding. The regulation, my understanding, is that the first inch has to be retained on that property without going on other people's property. This was not going to be done. We had a meeting with the city, had a meeting with the contractor, Marcy Forbes, the consultant from Duelin Associates, and her boss, Al, attended. She basically put a halt on that until they could walk the property, find out exactly what was going to happen. When we walked the property, Jack Boziak was there, Patricia Montecchi, Marcy, Al Carrier, and Guy, the contractor. When I talked to the engineer, he said, she said, "Well, this is not involving swift mud." Well, she was wrong. Because I said, I told her, "You're going to have the opportunity to tell swift mud that they're not, they're not to be involved in this project." Lo and behold, swift mud does approve those type of things. They made them put in some large concrete vaults, about 5, 4 by 3 and 1/2, buried to collect the water and put it in the existing storm sewers. And the drawings had to be approved. Like I told Mr. Evans, I plan to have a meeting with him on his agenda, and I welcome the board to attend, to do a walkthrough of the project, take a look at it, take a look at the street, how the street is flooded right now when it rains, especially the north end of Golf Lane next to 133rd. All I can tell you is be cautious when you deal with Mr. Boziak. I don't trust him, and I tell him that to his face. Thank you.
Hi, this is, I'm Doug Andrews, 9141st Avenue here in Madera. I want to talk about this $50,000 audit that we're doing over at the Marina. You guys all ran on transparency and fiscal responsibility, so the first question is, why was this never workshopped? Okay? I also want to know which in any of you ever spoke to John Hauser directly? Did Jonathan speak to him? Who, who on the panel spoke to this guy directly to find out if this was actually necessary? Please don't tell me that the reason this came to light was because we trusted the word of Walter and Zippy the Fire Chimp, because that would be just ridiculous. If it was actually said by John Hauser, when was it said? Why did he not mention this concern in front of you guys when he delivered his report to you, his cap for report to you? We have a finance department. Why didn't we do an internal audit to find out if we'd seen anything peculiar before spending that first $15,000? Why was this not put out to bid? What did your newly-formed bid committee have to say about the fact that you're spending $50,000 without going to bid? Who found this CPA firm? Why is it based in Miramar, Florida? In good gosh's name, why, why did we pick a firm that's 400 miles away who we have to pay their travel and lodging expenses for? Was there not a CPA firm in the greater Tampa-St. Pete area that could handle the audit for a small municipal marina? Guys, there's a lot of questions out here, and honestly, people come to my store every day, and they're asking me. Where's the detailed report that was promised for the first 15 grand that was spent for the CPA firm? Why has that not been published? What have they found so far? Commissioner Weinstein, last meeting, you went on record saying that you knew all along it was going to cost more than $15,000. Yet some of the commissioners weren't even informed of the first 15 grand happening. How and when did you find out about this before everybody else did? And basically, you knowingly let the city manager go ahead with this, knowing he was going to exceed his spending power. Because you knew all along it was going to cost more than 15 grand. Okay? How come all the commissioners weren't aware of this project, and only certain commissioners were privy to it? Commissioner Douthur, you said $50,000 was a drop in the bucket. Okay? Did you speak to John Hauser directly about this? Did you talk to him personally? Okay? Or was this your plan all along from your pre-commission Mad Beach United days to go after Dave and the Marina? Okay? Where's the 50 grand coming from? There's nothing in the budget that says anything about a Marina audit for $50,000. My guess, it's true that you're using the Marina revenue above budget overage to pay for their own audit. Okay? These guys are over budget, and you're using their money to pay to try to, to do a forensic audit on them. It's ridiculous. Okay? Lot of questions. Okay? Has any of you guys met with loggerheads about privatizing the Marina? Rumor is that you guys are actually talking to another firm about going in and privatizing Marina before actually making it public. Okay? Do you realize you're destroying Mr. Marzano's reputation in the Marina in general? And we just had a guy sitting here this morning, this afternoon, talking about how great he is. And everybody else says the same thing, and you guys are going after him. Again, a lot of questions, folks, and frankly, not enough sunshine for my taste.
Anyone else wish to speak? Public comment is now closed.
Mayor, before you continue with our different agenda items, I just need to tell you that, or I just need to ask, I guess, that I need to be out of here by 7 o'clock if I get up and leave, because it's our high holy, yom kippur beginning, and I need to be at another place. Okay? So if you see me leave, it's, that's why. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we have the ordinance 2018-10 establishing the millage rate for fiscal year 2019, second reading and public hearing. Director Pierce.
Madam Mayor, I want the clerk to read the ordinance.
Ordinance 2018-10, an ordinance of the city of Madera Beach, Florida, establishing the millage rate for fiscal year 2019, providing and announcing the name of the taxing authority, the rolled-back millage rate, the percentage increase over the rolled-back millage rate, and the millage rate to be levied, providing for reading in its entirety and providing for an effective date. Whereas Florida statutes, section 200.065, requires the adoption of millage rate by separate vote and prior to the adoption of the budget, and whereas Florida statute, section 200.065, requires that prior to adoption of the millage levy ordinance, the following be publicly announced: the name of the taxing authority, the rolled-back millage rate, the percentage increase over the rolled-back millage rate, and the millage rate to be levied, and whereas in no event may the millage rate adopted exceed the millage rate tentatively adopted. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the city of Madera Beach, Florida. Section 1, the name of the taxing authority is the city of Madera Beach. Section 2, the rolled-back millage rate for fiscal year 2019 is 2.0514 per $1,000. Section 3, the fiscal year 2019 proposed millage rate is 7.24% higher than the rolled-back rate. Section 4, the millage rate to be levied for fiscal year 2019 shall be 2.2000 per $1,000. Section 5, the ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption.
And Madam Mayor, the millage rate again for the fiscal year 2019 shall be 2.2000 mils per 1,000, and the staff recommends approval of the ordinance 2018-10. And this is the second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board? Floor is now open for public comment. Floor is now closed. You have a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance 2018-10 on the second reading.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? The city clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthur?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Mayor Blaine?
Yes.
Next, we have ordinance 2018-11 adopting the budget for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2018, and ending September 30, 2019, second reading and public hearing.
And Madam Mayor and Commissioners, again, I'll let the clerk read this ordinance, and I'll read the numbers.
Ordinance 2018-11, an ordinance of the city of Madera Beach, Florida, adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2018, and ending September 30, 2019, providing for reading in its entirety and providing for an effective date. Whereas Florida statute, section 166.241, requires the adoption of a budget each fiscal year, and whereas the amount available from taxation and other sources, including balances brought forward from prior years, must equal the total appropriation for expenditures and reserves, and whereas at a minimum, the adopted budget must show for each fund as required by law and sound financial practices, budgeted revenues, and expenditures by organizational unit, which are at least at the level of detail required for the annual financial report required under section 218.32, paragraph 1, and whereas the adopted budget must regulate expenditures of the municipality, and an officer of a municipal government may not expend or contract for expenditures in any fiscal year except as pursuant to the adopted budget, and whereas the city of Madera Beach tentative fiscal year 2019 budget is balanced, is presented at the level of detail required to file the annual financial report, and shall regulate expenditures of the city for the period beginning October 1, 2018, and ending September 30, 2019. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the city of Madera Beach, Florida. Section 1, the fiscal year 2019 budget shall be governed by the following funding sources and uses.
So the funding uses, governmental and proprietary funds. The governmental funds, and I'll read these in total. For the general fund, it, the total funding sources, $9,934,800. Local option sales tax fund, total funding sources, $459,200. Archibald fund, total funding sources, $477,900. Building fund, total funding sources, $708,000. Gas tax fund, total funding sources, $113,500. Debt service fund, total funding sources, $1,318,200. Proprietary funds, sanitation fund, total funding sources, $1,372,000. Stormwater fund, total funding sources, $1,397,600. Marina fund, total funding sources, $2,449,600. So the total funding sources, governmental and proprietary funds, is $18,229,000. Funding sources for governmental and proprietary funds, this is basically your expenditures. Governmental funds, total, general fund, total funding sources, $9,934,800. Local option sales tax, total funding uses, $459,200. Archibald fund, total funding uses, $477,900. Building fund, total funding uses, $708,000. Gas tax fund, total funding uses, $113,500. Debt service fund, total funding uses, $1,318,200. Proprietary funds, sanitation fund, total funding uses, $1,370,200. Stormwater fund, total funding uses, $397,600. Marina fund, total funding uses, $2,449,600. For the total funding uses for governmental and proprietary funds, $18,229,000. You want to read those sections?
Section 2, total funding sources and uses include fund balance reclassifications, which are appropriated for governance purposes but represent neither revenues nor expenditures. Section 3, total funding sources and uses include inter-fund transfers, which are appropriated for governance purposes but represent neither revenues of the debt service fund nor expenditures of the general fund. Section 4, total funding sources and uses will be amended as of October 1, 2018, to include encumbered balances legally reserved as of September 30, 2018, i.e. balances not otherwise limited per section 10.6 of the city charter. Section 5, the ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption.
And Madam Mayor and Commissioners, I do have some talking points, but I think the city manager wanted to address something first.
Madam Mayor, members of the commission, at the next regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, especially since we're going to have a special meeting on the 25th, I'd like to update the board on the fiscal impact associated with Amendment 1 that will be presented to the voters on November 6. In rough estimates, it's projected to impact government agencies across Pinellas County to the tune of $42 million. And that is going to, of course, be compounding. The fiscal impact here in Madera Beach is projected to be about $54,000, but staff wants to provide a more comprehensive report to you that will be part of the meeting that we will have with the board on the 25th of September. But we did want to educate and inform the voters about Amendment 1 and its impact as they get ready to cast their ballots. Mail-in ballots will go out the first week of October, and then, of course, the general election is November 6. So we're going to be bringing that back towards the, or back to the board on the September 25th meeting.
And as far as talking points, just start off first by saying, today I sent you an electronic copy, and I provided a hard copy of the, Budget Committee had provided a letter to myself, the city manager and myself, as far as recommendations and other comments that they discussed at their last meeting on August 28. And that's just for your review. I'm also, based on a request by Commissioner Hodges, she wanted to see budget amounts for 2018, and actual by, by area revenue and expenditures, and I provided that as for the general fund only, just for a review. And if you have any comments, just let me know. We're in the process of reconciling some of the other funds in this month and as we go forward and close out the year. The, the one comment that I would like to make is just a couple of talking points. This year's proposed tax levy is $2,770 and $257. We take 95% of that for budgeting purposes, which makes up our ad valorem, which is $2,631,800. And the ad valorem is the property attack, property tax revenue that we receive. Last year was $2,446,000. So this is an increase of $185,800 from last year. Also, just the general fund, just some real quick facts. As I've read off, the general fund total is $9,934,800, which is basically 32,700 less than the previous year. One of the reasons, and I explained this at the first public reading, but one more time, one of the key reasons is, is that one of the large revenue items that we've received in the past is from the FEMA reimbursement. Last year, we budgeted $1,349,000. And this year, because of that program and the, and the commission's desire to further reduce that type of program, we're only budgeting $500,000 for revenue and the matching expenditures for that. So that, that's one of the main decreases in the revenue. We talked about parking, and we're going to establish some cash reserve accounts based on the resolutions that, that the commission passed, based on the 50 cent increase. $271,600 of the BP lawsuit money is going to be allocated to John Pass improvements, which totals over $100,000. Municipal complex improvements to City Hall here totaling $50,000, and, and a needed repair to the firehouse as far as asphalt layering of $75,000. Also, as far as the expenditures, and I indicated this at the first public meeting, we are going to establish a new department called Legal Services, and so that we can better track those expenditures going forward, and just give us a better history as we, we track those. We're also creating a new department for the commission as well, and the basic, you know, reason there is, again, to better track the expenditures. In the non-departmental budget, we did have an increase of 18% or over 18% in computer support, and that basically is due to our much-needed cyber- percent in computer support, and that basically is due to our much-needed cyber support security agreement from network people, which is proving very valuable in blocking a lot of attempts to infiltrate our, our, our software systems. Also talked about a transfer from Archibald and the Building Fund at the last meeting, and basically the Building Fund helping to support code compliance work that's done now one day a week by the Deputy Sheriff's Office. The Building Fund, which I didn't mention at the last meeting, is going to increase significantly this, next year, overall increasing almost fifty-four percent from the previous year due to increase in building permits. We talked about the refund, the refunding of the debt of the one point two million dollar balloon payment that we were looking at as far as the end, that's associated with the undergrounding project, which we're hoping that Phase 2 and the completion of that starts relatively soon. We talked about CIP budget for all funds, which is one point six million, six hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred, that is to the General Fund, and that's for improvements and equipment purchases. We are looking at enterprise rental car as far as leasing, which is an initiative of the City Managers, as far as trying to reduce some of the budget that, hopefully reduce some of the, the budget that, that's going to be earmarked there. Again, as I mentioned at the last, first public meeting, I would like to thank the Budget Committee, which consisted of Roger Pryor, June Muns, Tom Edwards, Doreen Moore, and, and John Hendricks. I just, it, it was some extra time during this year to prepare and to meet with them, but I, I, I found it very rewarding and very beneficial. Is there any questions?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. Number one, on the dollar amount that you, for funds, general, general fund for revenue, how will the suspending the parking money affect 2018 as well as 2019, and are we taking any precautions in case this goes on for a, a period of time to, you know, adjust accordingly? What are we doing, I guess is what I'm asking?
Well, at this particular moment, obviously associated with red tide, we're getting virtually, you know, next to nothing as far as revenue collections for our meters, but I would envision that when we get closer to when this particular situation comes to some type of conclusion, we can provide a fiscal impact. There is some monies that is available in the budget to mitigate against any type of shortfall, but in the event that we see that there is a elongated period, then that's something that we would have to bring back to the Board to request a transfer out of fund balance, but right now, we're experiencing a, a decrease in our parking revenue associated with red tide, and that kind of goes back to the conversation that we had earlier on in the budget processes, that we're, as an organization, so reliant on that parking revenue, that when we have these types of issues, whether it's environmental or other things, that it puts us in a precarious situation as a city. So we're going to continue to monitor it and then formulate kind of a, a plan of attack that we would be able to update the Board at the conclusion of this. Worst-case scenario, we can anticipate bringing something to the Board in March to give you, or not March, but October, to give you an update what the impact is if this goes on longer than a week or two.
And that, that spot in the, in the fund balance is called an emergency fund, and it is for special things such as this hurricane and, and what's happening right now.
I just know what Jay Gunner said and what has been on television, they said, you know, the red tide could possibly, you know, last seventeen months, you know, I mean, and that's pretty ugly, and then that's a lot of revenue to lose, and I'm just trying to figure out how we adjust accordingly, you know, down the road. I mean, do we have, I mean, you got budgeted for next year a million seven coming in from parking revenue, and if it goes on five or six months into next year, that's going to put a huge dent in, in the budget, and how do we adjust?
I'm almost glad that we, we took a real conservative approach on, on revenue for the parking. We kind of ignored the extra fifty cents because that is geared toward paying off the debt and other infrastructure things, so we kind of.
But you're still looking at one seven, one point seven million right now.
Right, right.
You know, and if it goes on for four or five months.
Right.
You know, we're in a world of hurt.
I will say one more thing, during the months of June, July, and part of August, we were breaking some pretty good records as far as collection.
But that's 2018, but now what happens when we go into 2019 is what I'm asking you. How we finish out this year, we're almost at the end, it shouldn't make a lot of difference, but when we go into 2019, it could have a very big fiscal impact on the city as a whole. That's what I'm asking. And I know you don't have the answers, I understand that, you know, I'm just saying this is something that we really need to be looking at and be prepared for if it does drag on for any length of time.
And, and that's certainly why we're going to have something almost as a standing agenda item on there, because you can rest assured that we'll be keeping up with the water samples, but any prolonged period certainly provides for some concern for us moving forward, so we will continue to monitor that, and then we will provide the Board with an update at least at, at the October, first workshop in October to, to give a status on what the fiscal impact is, because we'll have a better understanding of the numbers at that time.
And again, it's the reason why we have and strive to have a healthy fund balance so that we can have fallback such as these to fall back on.
Second question, I've asked since last year's budget for a like item list, you know, like cell phones, you know, rather than have to go through each page of that budget, you know, what cellphone's going to cost us, just the total? What's each t-shirt's going to cost us or uniforms? What's it going to cost us, just a like item for the whole city, so we don't have to go through each little department saying, okay, now here's twenty dollars, here's a hundred dollars.
I hear you, Commissioner, I mean, I know that's, it's initiative yours, I, I get that, and, you know, from here, just so you know, from here, we do a proposed budget book, we do a tentative budget book, which is this right here, and then after this, and after, after tonight, we do a, an adopted budget book or binder similar to what we did last year. I know it seems like a lot, but, and in that, hopefully in that adopted binder, we can put some summary information at least for the General Fund to, to, to make it, that we're heading toward that.
Hopefully, we will have.
We will for the General Fund. You know, we, this book is like the City Manager mentioned, is almost double what the size it was last year, and again, we, we have, we had to include some things in here because we do want to go after the, the GFOA certificate for budgeting, which we haven't received at all in years past. We've been pretty good about receiving it for the CAFR, but, but not for budgeting. But we get it, Commissioner, we're going to try to do that.
Thank you very much. It's all my questions. Sorry.
I have, I have a quick question, please. It's with regards to the parking fees again. Do you have the comparison of what, for instance, July and August was in 2017 versus 2018, or if you don't have it, would you share those figures with us?
I can get that.
I know that they went up from 2017. I'm not saying that that's, you know, not going to go back a little bit for whatever reason, but I think that the 2018 figures for those same months did increase from 2017?
Yeah, I will get that, I'll get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
You know, even after, which I, I found surprising, after the fee schedule was adopted and approved and the increase to fifty cents, I think that was mid-June, right after that, like I said, the, the whole month of June, we almost, we almost reached over two hundred thousand for the month, which, you know, was, was unheard of in the past, so we, you know, we were doing very, very well, but I will get that, that comparison and provide it to the Board.
Any more discussion from the Board? The floor is now open for public comment on this item. Floor is now closed. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion on ordinance 2018-11, adopting the budget for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2018 and ending September 30, 2019, after the second reading and public hearing which we've had tonight.
Second. Any more discussion from the Board? Will the City Clerk please call to roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthier?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next item is ordinance 2018-12, election ordinance, manner of holding the election for the charter amendments and its location, second reading and public hearing.
I will read the ordinance in its entirety to explain the procedure. Ordinance 2018-12, and ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, calling for a general municipal election on November 6, 2018, for placing ten charter amendments on the ballot for the Madeira Beach voters to decide on, providing for publication, authorizing election expenditures, identifying the Pinellas County Camis and Board as a camis and Board for the November 6, 2018 general election, authorizing for a runoff election if necessary, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith to the extent of such conflict, and providing for an effective date. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida. Section 1, an election shall be held in the City of Madeira Beach, Florida on Tuesday, November 6, 2018, for the purpose of City of Madeira Beach voters to vote on the ten charter amendments. Section 2, in accordance with City Charter, Section 3.4, Subsection B, the Board of Commissioners shall designate the Pinellas County Camis and Board to serve as the Camis and Board for the City of Madeira Beach. The Camis and Board shall certify all tests of election equipment and shall canvas absentee as well as provisional ballots. The actions of the Camis and Board shall be reported to the Board of Commissioners at its next meeting following the election. The Board of Commissioners shall meet following the certification to the purpose of declaring the results of said election. Section 4, in the event of a runoff election is necessitated for a particular charter amendment, the runoff election will be held the second Tuesday in December. Section 5, the polling locations for City of Madeira Beach voters to vote in the November 6, 2018 general election are as follows. Precinct 415, Madeira Beach Municipal Building, City Center Room, 300 Municipal Drive, Madeira Beach, Florida. Precinct 301, Faith Community Church of Seminole, 11501 Walker Avenue, Seminole, Florida, 33772. Section 7, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance be hereby repealed insofar as the same effect this ordinance. Section 8, this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon its adoption in the manner provided by law.
Any discussion from the Board on this ordinance? Floor is now open for public comment?
Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore Drive, Madeira Beach. Again, you're, this whole process, you put the cart before the horse. Last night was the first time that really a public hearing was held on these type of amendments and how it was going to be, and question and answer period. What you did is you just shoved it down our throat, and then you voted on it, and then we're asking questions on which way it's going to go for our voting, but you should have had that type of input from the very beginning of this, where you had these question and answer periods. It was a very good meeting last night, Mr. Evans, Ms. Van Bargen, and the City Attorney. They answered questions, most of them, but that's the type of thing you need to have before you place amendments up for a ballot initiative in an election. It was just piss poor the way you did it. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
Again, Reese Noran, 363 Medallion Boulevard, your closest neighbor. I did think last night's meeting was a great exhibit of democracy in action. It allowed for people to express their questions, and the answers were provided in as much as possible. What, what was missing in a way of answers was the why or the impact of the particular amendment, and I understand that's not something that was able to be responded to by the people sitting there, but it, it was nice to see the questions arose. I think there should have been more education for the general population of what was being contemplated when we had a Amendment Charter Review Committee formed, because nobody that I have met knew what that was about except the people involved. And I realize on the part of the people doing the work, they meet the requirement, the legal requirement for announcing their, their meetings. However, what is that, 24 hours notice? Nobody knows what's going to happen in that and what it's about, and our communications, which you've heard me harp on before, are very, very inadequate. The, the website either isn't working, or you can't find what you want, or you get on one item and you can't get off of it to get to another. The bulletin board until very recently was useless. It had nothing on it as far as meetings were concerned until the meeting was over. So we're getting better, but we need to get a lot better, and I think what my opinion of operating in the sunshine, which is not an easy thing to do, I've been on boards myself, is that the sunshine should be emphasized, not minimized. That's my whole argument for better communications, is we need to advertise, there's enough apathy in the general population, some of them even don't go out and vote, which I don't understand at all, but that's the way it is. So thank you for the type meeting you had last night, and I think we need more of them. I do agree that it should have been done earlier, that's water under the dam. Thank you.
Any else wish to speak? Public comment is now paused.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
I would like to say I also attended last night. I felt it was a, a good, a good exchange of, of thoughts. This was the first time I've actually not made comments, because I was sitting on this side of the, the ass instead of the other side, but I will say for a first-time effort by all of the different committees to work on these different things, and certainly the Charter Review Committee, I feel an excellent review and an excellent number of meetings, I think there were nine or 12 meetings that were held by the Charter Review, all of them properly noticed, all of them that each of us, Board of Commissioners, City Manager, anybody else within the city could certainly have shared with any citizens of our desire for them to come to those meetings, so I think it was well-attended, the ones that I went to of the Charter Review Committee, by different individuals, and I think it was a good process. I, I think that it's now the responsibility of all of the voters to, after all, it's the voters who are making the final decision, so it's the responsibility of the voters to get out there and do it. Thank you.
Any more discussion?
I'd like to make a couple of comments. Kind of what Debbie Weinstein just said, you know, the Charter Committee didn't meet a lot, and they did announce it. You know, people said that we should be meeting, having meetings earlier to inform people what this is all about. From my history, if, if we would have started last March or April, people would have forgot by now. You know, you have to have it closer to the time of the, of the voting for people to really understand what's going on, or they're going to come in last June and then they're going to forget about what it was, you know, and if I'm correct, we are going to have a couple more meetings on this, correct, City Manager?
Yes, sir, that is correct. We will definitely have one more, possibly another one, so.
You know, so I think that's very, very important, but I think if, if you start them too early, I think it, it's, it really doesn't pay a purpose. I think it really doesn't pay a purpose. You know, I think the closer, and like 60, 90 days out before the election, I think is the best time to do it. And that gives people time to really think about it in shoes. They also said, you know, well, why are we doing this? You know, we haven't made the decision to put these ten items, or we didn't, I don't wanna say that. We didn't put these ten items and just put them on the charter. We're sending it out to the residents to vote on. Now it's up to them to read this stuff over, ask questions, and then them, the residents of this area, make the decision on what they want in the charter and what they don't want. Mr. Reese kind of brought up, well, we shouldn't have our elected officials, you know, with titles behind their name. I would say to him, most people won't sell a house unless the real estate agent holds a title. Most people won't go to an accountant unless the accountant holds a title. Not sure as hell I'm not going to the doctor unless the doctor holds a title and the nurse holds a title. So yes, I think titles are very, very important, you know? And the titles that we're asking for are just asking them to be knowledgeable, be ethically and morally responsible to the city. And that's what these titles kind of lead to. I really believe that in my heart. Just, that's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I personally would like to thank the committee because, you know, Jonathan, I believe, said that aside from all the meetings that they had, each one of them was at least three hours, right? So they were very dedicated and it was a lot of hard work. And thank you very much. Any more discussion?
We need a motion.
We need a motion.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2018-12.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthur?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein? Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
And next on the agenda, we have the Reddington Fire Services Contract verbal presentation.
Madam Mayor and members of the board, this evening I have with me Fire Inspector Mr. Clint Black to update the board as it relates to the Reddington Fire Service Contract. The City of Madeira Beach and Seminole have been providing fire suppression services to the Reddington communities for quite a bit of time now. The agreement goes back all the way to 2000. Currently, the city is in conversations with the Reddington communities and they have expressed the desire to renew the contract for a period of 10 years with an option to potentially consider another 10-year renewal. The contract right now is about a $250,000 contract for the provisions of fire service in the Reddington community. Based on the data that staff has obtained is that on average, we respond to calls there between both Seminole and the City of Madeira Beach, about one and a half times per day. Most of the calls are related to emergency medical services, but occasionally we have to respond to fire calls. And that's pretty consistent, that most of the services that are provided for fire personnel throughout the county is EMS services. So in conversations that we've had with our partner, Seminole, their desire is to execute the contract with no modifications and tweaks to the existing contract, just ensuring that the contract meets legal sufficiencies. There is no desire to discuss or modify the monies that are being remitted to the City of Seminole. Basically, the City of Madeira Beach and the City of Seminole receive the same amount of monies to provide services in that community. In the conversation that I've had with fire personnel and the fire chief, I asked the question, for us to provide services to the Reddington community, have we incurred any additional costs associated with those services? Have we acquired any additional personnel? Have we acquired any additional apparatus? Would there be an expansion of service associated with this renewal? And he communicated to me that, no, that's not the case. And with the existing contract that's been in place, we haven't had to effectively do that. In the event that we were not to provide services to the Reddington communities, we will still need the same number of firefighter, paramedics, and the same type of apparatus. When you look at the contract, there's some language in there that talks about there is an inflation number that's in there that is consistent with the U.S. Department of Labor Price Index for the Tampa Bay region. And that's an annual cost adjustment not to exceed 5%. So consistently, we have seen increases associated with that particular contract. What staff is recommending is for the board to consider, and not this evening, this is just merely an update, to enter into a long-term contract with the Reddington communities for the provisions of fire services. We believe that this contract, if executed, puts us in a very good position to be able to effectively staff Station 26, which will be under construction shortly, which is the fire station north of our community that will be providing the services to the Reddington communities. One of the things that we had in conversations with the board during the budget process is we really don't have concrete numbers to be able to provide the board. How did we ever derive the number in 2000? And how do we come up to what the number is today? Is basically on the annual inflation that we see. So one of the things that we would like to embark upon is a comprehensive analysis, looking at our fire services, and to derive exactly what the cost is for fire services here in the City of Madeira Beach. So if we come up to a number that says it costs, on average, $10 per household to provide fire services for the residents of Madeira Beach, that's a number that, in the event that we are to have the conversations with our contracted entities, that we now have factual data to be able to provide, this is the cost to provide the service. The number that was proffered virtually 20 years ago is really a nebulous number. There's no backup information to be able to defend that number if questioned. So I think for us to move forward, I would recommend that as part of the approval process that we would bring to the board, that the board do, does consider authorizing staff to proceed forward with a comprehensive study to look at the cost to provide services here in the City of Madeira Beach per residential unit or per square mile, et cetera. And then also look at what we can see fire services look like in the next three to five years. Because as we know, as our population continues to age, we are going to have to be able to address some of the medical needs and the demands and the technology and the costs associated with providing the service. So in a nutshell, basically, staff is recommending that we bring forward the contract for a long-term extension. We believe that the contract as in its current form is something that the City of Seminole will execute and that if we, as a city, have some heartburner issues with respect to the fees that are being charged, we don't have the actual documentation to defend why we would ask for a increase, because they have been paying that incremental increase associated with the labor statistics for the Tampa Bay region. So we want to bring that back to the board. We wanted to bring the board up to speed on the conversations that we have had. We've met with all three mayors in the Reddington communities. We've met with the city administrator for the City of Seminole. And we have also met with their fire chief. And that community is prepared to execute the contract. I do have Mr. Belk here, our fire inspector, to provide any additional information from the fire safety side. And at this time, staff is prepared, after Mr. Belk's comments, to answer any questions the board may have. I believe you covered all the bases on that. If you guys have any questions, I'm here to answer them if I can.
I think that's a real good idea. So we actually can associate a number with a figure of number of people and what it really does cost us. Because we, the number going in was never known, so.
It's hard to believe we didn't know that already.
That was 20 years ago.
Hopefully now and then, somebody should have ran the numbers.
So you are gonna start that process?
Yes. What we would do, Madam Commissioner, is when we would bring the contract back, there would be a corresponding agenda item for us to embark on a study, to be able to find out the cost for fire suppression services in our community. And I think that would be the mechanism to effectively begin the conversation with our partner agencies if we see that the cost is over and above the cost that we are charging them for the provisions of fire service.
I've got a couple questions. You know, you said, we were told in the past that the $243,000 a year has been the same for 20 years. So you're saying that's not true?
That's not true. The original contract, in some cases, started back at, I'm looking at Reddington Beach, and it started here at $73,000, Reddington Beach. And then the other contracts have different amounts. So it's been, it has incrementally gone up based on the escalator that's provided for in the contracts.
Okay, and the second thing is, before, when we asked, you know, how much is Madeira Beach getting versus how much Seminole's getting? Everybody just threw their hands up and answered, we don't know. We just know this is how much we're getting. We don't know what the total that's being paid and Seminole's dishing it back to us. So, but now you're saying it's a 50-50 split?
The Seminole is receiving approximately $250,000 and so is the City of Madeira Beach for a half a million dollars in monies to provide the services to the Reddington communities.
And this, and it should go up incrementally at the 5% or whatever raises a year? The cost of living or whatever, that should go up?
Based on, yes, the U.S. Department of Labor statistics, so based on that. So it's not to exceed a 5%, but it is incrementally supposed to go up every year.
Okay.
Is there any reason it's a 10-year contract? Because it seems that 5-year contract might be a more favorable thing.
We had the conversation and for the parties that were involved, they were pretty confident and pretty comfortable with a 10-year agreement because they wanted to memorialize a long-term arrangement. But there are provisions in there with 90 days' notice that effectively a party can exit the existing agreement. But from the conversations that we've had, there wasn't any desire from the Reddington communities or even the City of Seminole to explore a shorter-term contract.
It's not so much a matter of them exiting the contract, but having an opportunity after five years if expenses go up to reevaluate the cost.
And we did have some conversations with representatives from Seminole to talk about the, looking at even just a one-year contract because we're unsure what's gonna happen at Station 29. Is it gonna be a jointly operated station with Madeira Beach and the City of Seminole? Or is there a situation whereby you can see another entity come in to provide services there? So with those unknowns, but it was discussed that if we execute a long-term contract, it puts us in a good position to, when the county does move forward with the construction of that station, they can see that there's already an existing relationship in place. And it makes it a stronger likelihood that either the City of Madeira Beach or the City of Seminole or both entities end up staffing that station. So there's some, you know, strategy associated with a longer-term agreement to send a clear and distinct picture to the county that we are committed to providing services to that area and to make sure that one or two of us are at the table when it talks about the full staffing at Station 26, when that's online.
You know, I, no matter what, if we do a one-year, five-year, 10-year, 50-year contract, you know, it's our obligation to really still take care of those people. I mean, it's not like, oh, they're over in Reddington and guy had a heart attack and we're not gonna show up. You know, that's not gonna happen. You know, I just wanna make sure that the residents of Madeira Beach are taken care of in the contract, you know, fiscally and financially.
Absolutely.
They're not picking up all the costs for the Reddingtons. So that's my main concern.
I would like to add as well, too, that as we go, as you get further up the beach, I know it probably sounds weird to have a split contract like that, but for the Reddingtons, we're the closest unit. We run almost 100% of the calls in the Reddington Beach. And as the further north you get, we're, our numbers dwindle down and Seminole's come up. So we, they're coming right across Park Boulevard Bridge. So at this point in time, until Station 26 is built, a split contract makes the most sense right now.
Tom Edwards, protective address. Does, do we supply fire inspections for their commercial buildings, multifamily buildings? Do we go ahead and do any plan review for new construction that would be going out there? Because they have a fire inspector will usually review those type of plans for fire safety. And do we do any arson investigations? So I don't know if we're doing any of that or Seminole's doing that.
Yeah, Seminole's currently contracted with the Reddingtons for all their fire inspections, plan and review.
But we're not providing that service. Thank you.
If we were to get Station 26, then of course, we would absorb that as well. If we got Station 26, once it's built.
If that is the case, then you have to consider that in the contract.
What would happen in the event that the City of Madeira Beach is selected to operate Station 26? You would effectively see, if we're the exclusive provider, you would see the monies that have been, the portion of the contract that goes to Seminole would be absorbed by the City of Madeira Beach. So there would be adequate funding to be able to staff that station and provide the services consistent with the services that we provide in our own community. So there would be funding and we would make sure, you know, in contract negotiations, that that's clearly articulated and memorialized in the agreement.
Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore. The fire service was part of my background, just kinda curious. How much of a raise in percentage did the city employees or city firefighters get last year?
Last year, the firefighters received a 3% raise, which is in their COLA, their step, I mean, their step plan, so.
Does that include all the benefits and stuff along with it? Or if you included all the benefits?
Just, just general wage increase.
But you have benefits added on to that to get increased and stuff like that, is that true? So could it be more than the 5%?
I would have to look at it, but, because if you look at pension costs, healthcare costs, all those different things, it's safe to assume, not looking at the data, that the cost for your personnel cost exceed that. Because it all depends on what the pension contributions are from the state and those types of things, so.
That's something we ought to look at when you're trying to make this decision as well. The other thing I have is, probably 95%, maybe even greater of the responses to Reddington Beach is probably medical, is that true?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So to run a million-dollar piece of equipment up and down the road is just ludicrous. You need a quick-response vehicle. You don't need an ambulance. You just need a quick-response vehicle with a couple people on it. You're gonna wear out that million-dollar piece of equipment and ended up having to replace it instead of buying a $30,000 truck with equipment on it. And you really need to look at that. From my understanding and what your manpower is currently, you're not, you will not have to increase manpower to do that. So you need to take a long, strong look at a quick-response vehicle that can be easily replaced, quick, maneuverable, can get around in the cul-de-sacs and the small areas instead of running that million-dollar piece of equipment. Because that is just, it's terrible. And the potential of damage is greater running that size of a piece of equipment around than a small truck as well. So it'd be something to look at. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? In that case, the meeting is adjourned at 7:26.